Good afternoon, everyone, to the Monday, August 5th, meeting of the Lincoln City Council. I wanted to say, you know, unfortunately, it was another sad time in our country this past weekend with two mass shootings. Twenty-nine families lost their loved one to the senseless, senseless gun violence. You know, please pray for them, but also please pray that our elected officials at the federal level and at the local level will have the courage to stand up and take immediate action to prevent other tragedies like this from happening in our country. So with that being said, let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the rear of the hearing room. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and then those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may make, then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to that item, and they all ask you to please sign in on the pink sheets at the podium there. Testimony is limited at five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the City Council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that day nor planned for a future agenda. So Theresa, will you please read the first item?
Yes, we ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda. Items 1 through 3 is Karen Griffin, David Spinar, Cindy Reiman-Yost, and Shams Al-Badri here. If you all would come forward.
And Joe Shaw, I see, eventually.
Yes, and Joe Shaw.
So I see that we have Karen and David as being appointed to the Lincoln Electric System Administrative Board for a term that expires December 31st, 2019. So welcome, Karen. We're glad to have you. Thank you for your service on this commission. Tell us a little bit about your background and why you're going to be a wonderful addition to the Lincoln Electric System.
Well, thank you, City Council members, for looking at me as potential candidate to be on the LES Board. I have spoken in front of the City Council before as a past president of the Great Plains Trails Network, and I'd like to now move on to a new appointment if that's selected. As you may know, my background is a geologist, means I'm a scientist, and I am with 97% of scientists in this world that understand that climate change is real and that it is our fault and that we need to do as much as we can about it to mitigate the effects of that impact on the world. So my goal is to help the LES Board and LES as a whole moving towards renewable energy sources of energy for our community and also looking at ways that we can all look to conserve energy. Personally, my husband and I are having solar panels installed next week, and we ride our bikes as much as possible. There's many things that we do to try to bring our carbon footprint down, and I want to try to help our community in that direction.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Is, does anyone else have a question for Karen?
I have some questions for Karen, and I'll have some questions for you also. So you kind of addressed some of this, but as we look ahead and consider the global challenge of climate change, Lincoln Electric System has a large responsibility in ensuring that our electric supply is resilient in a warming world, as well as in reducing its own carbon emissions. One of the questions that I have is LES's Administrative Board, which sets policy for LES. To what extent are you willing to set LES on the trajectory just adopted by Omaha Public Power District in initiating a study called Pathways to Decarbonization, essentially seeking a pathway for the utility to decarbonize?
I'm, I think there are many communities across our country that are setting a great standard for which we can achieve here in Lincoln for decarbonization of our, our city's footprint and working on the LES Board, I hope to continue that work.
Are you also willing to require LES to set a renewable energy goal with a timetable, for example, about like 70% clean energy by 2030 or 80 to 2025, some kind of goal of that nature?
Right. The communities across the country have been setting such goals, 2035, 2050, or faster if they can. I'm one of many on this board that I will work towards that, setting a goal for this community, yes.
Okay, so you'd be fine with like setting some sort of goal as a pathway for LES?
Yes.
Are you willing to meet with individuals and organizations who want LES to take action in response to climate change?
Yes.
Awesome. And then are you familiar with LES's Sustainable Energy Program, which provides funding to help residential businesses, customers reduce their energy usage?
I know about, not the details, but I knew, know it in general.
Sure, yeah. So not knowing all the specifics, are you willing to support maintaining the funding for the Sustainable Energy Program?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my questions, and I'm gonna have the same ones for you, kind of verbatim, so I thank you for going first. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Karen. Well, welcome, David. Tell us a little bit about your background and what you would like to do with your appointment to the Lincoln Electric System Board.
Sure. I'm David Spinar, S.P.I.N.A.R., and I live at 9611 Hollitree Drive here in Lincoln. I'm a financial advisor. I have worked in a personal financial planning practice with my father, Don Spinar, since 2008. He recently retired, so I'm doing my best to run the show on my own now. Before that, I had worked in compliance and regulatory position with a financial services business in Omaha, and I, that came as a result of having been a graduate of the law college, Sharon Lincoln. I'm a Lincoln kid. I've grown, been here since I was two years old, elementary, junior high, high school, undergrad, and law school, and as I say, my wife and I live here in town. I very much appreciate the opportunity to be considered for the LES Board, because, number one, I think that Nebraska is unique as a state focused on public power. I'm a firm believer in government being, can be a, an engine for benefits for citizens, and public power is one of the great examples of how that can work effectively. If we take a look at reliability and cost for the electricity that LES provides, cities, the citizens here in Lincoln and the surrounding communities they serve, LES does a really good job, right? And I look forward to the opportunity to continue to promote, you know, the good work that they've done and to add on to what Karen said, obviously, we are in a circumstance now where we need to be thinking, how does reliability and cost factor into sustainability? And I think that LES certainly has taken steps down that road, the sustainability programs, you know, they, they have the, the wind farm, or not the wind farm, but the, the solar panel farm, if you want to pay into, you can get credit against your bill. In terms of, and I'll just sort of try and anticipate some of those questions, I think that culturally, from what I can tell, LES very much is interested in trying to learn ways to have a smaller carbon footprint, both as, as an organization, but also in terms of the kind of education that it provides citizens. You know, it's sort of an interesting business in that they try hard to help their customers use less of what they sell to them, right? I mean, there's, there's energy programs, you know, if there's credits that you can get for establishing a more, more efficient home, more efficient business. So that's one example where I think they're in alignment with all of us in terms of how can we be smarter about how we use energy. Secondly, in terms of the, the question about goals, at this point, I'm, I would be reluctant to say this is what the goal should be, because I'm not informed enough to say this is what we can do. I like the idea of being aspirational about how much better we can be in terms of being smarter about using energy and the sources that provide the energy that we need. But I guess I would say, you know, not being certainly an expert on sort of where they're at now, I would, you know, I don't want to commit myself to something that's not possible because I don't know any better, right? And I think maybe there are some other questions. In terms of meeting with individuals that want to educate me and educate others in Lincoln, in terms of what are things that we can do to be more sustainable, and how can we use resources that maybe we haven't considered yet to have an even better carbon footprint than what we have now? Absolutely, 100%. I'm a firm believer in information being a primary source of how we should drive decisions.
So, sorry. So without knowing like exactly what kind of goal it should be at, are you willing to set LES to be on a goal at some point? How long it takes to help get the bearings, are you willing to help kind of?
Oh, for sure.
Leave a charge in saying that we want to be at a certain percentage by a certain year?
I, yeah, yes.
Okay. And then you said that you'd be willing to meet with individuals and organizations who want LES to take action in response to climate change. To kind of follow up with the decarbonization, the same question that I asked, to what extent are you willing to set LES on a trajectory just adopted by OPPD? Are you willing to start looking at decarbonization or kind of starting that trajectory?
Sure. Let's look at it. Let's see what it means.
Okay. And then are you familiar with the Sustainable Energy Program?
Vaguely.
Vaguely? Okay.
I would support, absolutely. I think it's a great idea. I would continue to support, right, funding for that. More that we can do to get people to use sustainable renewable source of energy, better, better, better.
And then the last question that I have for you is I noticed on your application there were several different boards that you requested to be on, and what was it about LES that makes you want to be on it now?
In terms, well, first, as I said, the, the public power nature of what LES gets to do is something that I think is a, it's an example that I want to champion because I'm, I'm a believer in good government, and I think that public power is a great example of how that shows up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Well, thank you both very much for your willingness to serve, and let's, let's have Shams Al-Badri and Cindy Reiman-Yost come and talk about the Lincoln Planning, Lincoln and Lancaster Planning Commission. Welcome. Please tell us, Shams, a little bit about your background and why you'd like to serve on the, the Planning Commission. I'm, I'm sure it's not because of the pay.
Not that. Hi, I'm Shams Al-Badri. I serve as an academic advisor. In addition to that, I am studying community development and serve on several boards within the community, such as New Leaders Council, Young Nonprofits Professionals Network, and the YWCA. And with those boards, a lot of it has to do with retention and development of young professionals in our community. Soon after graduating college, I moved to Kansas City, and I taught for a couple of years and found Nebraska calling me back home, so I came back to Lincoln. And with that, I saw that there was a need for the retention of young professionals and also opportunities for people to develop. And with that, I know our Planning Commission does a lot of work with bringing in different businesses and economic growth to our communities. So that's one of the main reasons I'd love to serve on the Planning Commission. So that's a quick overview of what I do. In addition to that, I am involved in different organizations that serve our different communities in Lincoln and serving in a way that is more equitable to a diverse Lincoln community.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Is there anyone that has any questions?
I do. Can you tell me a little bit about your understanding of sort of the regional planning issues here in Lincoln and Lancaster County?
I think as of right now, the understanding is we have a lot of development that's going to be happening and ensuring that we're growing as, as a city and addressing those issues. So I know some of the issues that we're coming across are, for instance, the chicken farm, which is a very popular thing right now, and just making sure that, you know, we're not only listening to the community, but also listening to the needs of individuals who are coming into our communities.
Okay. And besides economic development and retaining young professionals, drawing people into Lincoln, what are the other issues that you care about in regards of Lincoln and Lancaster County, other planning issues?
I think it's important, and I know I mentioned this with young professionals, but also diversity, and ensuring that we're, when we are bringing in different companies or organizations, that we're looking at organizations that value bringing in individuals with different backgrounds and addressing their needs as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is not a question, but more of a statement. I just want to say that I look forward to voting for you because you are a proven leader in our community. You've done a lot of things in Lincoln and Lancaster County, and you're a great role model for a lot of people, so I'm really excited to vote for you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, welcome, Cindy. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Tell us a little bit about your background.
All right. So I am, was born in Lincoln. Both of my grandparents, my grandfathers were small business owners in Lincoln, and my grandmother worked for Lincoln Public Schools. But I grew up in a small rural community in the Sand Hills on a cow-calf operation, so have a little bit of ag background as well, and moved back here for college, undergrad and graduate work, and then have spent my entire professional life in the nonprofit field, focused mostly on organizations that serve children and families. So, and I was the executive director of Lincoln Children's Museum downtown for four years in its new facility. So passionate about Lincoln, passionate about the citizens. We've had three kids at LPS, two of them who have graduated, and one who has found a new home, and we want to make sure that Lincoln is a place that she wants to move back to. She wants to know that she is welcome here and that this is a place where she would like to live and be a professional as well. So very personally committed to making sure that Lincoln's a great place professionally and in terms of thinking about serving on the Planning Commission, looking at how Lincoln can continue its trajectory of positive growth, both in terms of businesses, looking at issues around transportation and public access for individuals, and then because of my work, working with children and families who are vulnerable or who live in poverty, making sure that we're balancing the needs of development so that we're not forgetting the most vulnerable citizens and that we pay attention to all the neighborhoods in both the city and throughout the county.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions, James?
Can't, I just, I feel so fortunate that both of you are here because I first met Cindy when I was fresh out of college, and I had the honor of having a cubicle right outside of her office when I was like 21, and she was a great role model, and she's definitely is looking out for children and families in our community, and I've looked up to her ever since I first met her, so I'm excited to see you here.
Thanks. Terrific. Any questions? Okay, well, thank you both so much for your willingness to serve. And Joe, welcome. And you are going to be on the Lincoln City Library Board.
If you vote me in, yes.
Okay. And then I didn't know, Pat, if you wanted to come up and say a few words or, sure. I know that there are many, many people, there are more people, I think, wanted to be on the library board than on the City Council, which, I mean, there was a lot.
Well, I would, I would just note that I want to acknowledge that our library board president, Donna Marvin, is also present, and I appreciate Donna's leadership in that position. Joe Shaw is the applicant whose form rose to the top as far as the library board review of those who applied for this position, and I'll allow Joe to maybe speak a little bit for himself in terms of his background, but as Joe and I met, as we're thinking about the future of libraries, a central library project, what else is in store in terms of great library service, Joe and I had a lot to talk about.
Terrific.
So I'm Joe Shaw. I currently serve as the executive director of the Lux Center for the Arts. I also serve as the president of the Board of Neighbor Works, Lincoln, and I have served on several city commissions and served as a city councilman in the city of Huntington Beach, California. I have lived in Lincoln for five years. I find it an amazing cultural city. I'm happy to serve on the library board because it's an important cultural institution, it's an important educational institution, it's an important social institution for many people. From the time I was a kid, I was buried in books, and I spent many of my days, when many of my weekends, riding my bike down to the central library in Tulsa, Oklahoma, where I'm from, and just, you know, getting as many books as I can and, and using all the services that they have. And I just want to serve on the board because I believe that we need to have robust library services, and I want to help make that happen.
Well, we are very fortunate to have you help do so. So, any questions? Well, thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on any of these items? All right, welcome.
Good afternoon. Ken Winston, 4021, Terry Lane. And I sort of hesitated, I wasn't planning to say anything, but, well, first of all, thank you, Councilman Bowers, for asking some questions about, of the candidates for, for the Lincoln Electric System. I guess the reason I wanted to say a couple of things is I've, I've spent years working with the Lincoln Electric System Board and have probably testified, I know dozens of times before the board and have worked with their staff on numerous occasions, and so based upon the responses that I heard today, I would say, I'm, I would say Karen Griffin ought to be unanimously supported for, for this board, and nothing against Mr. Spinar, but, gosh, it's not that hard to click on your, open up your mouse and just click on LES and find out what they are doing before you come before the City Council. And frankly, he didn't know enough about what, what the City Council is doing, or what the LES Board does for me to feel like he should be appointed to that board. I mean, it seems to me that if you want to be on something, you ought to know what they do. You ought to know what their, what their portfolio consists of. And so, like I said, nothing against him personally, but it's not hard to find that stuff out. It's on the internet, you can look it up. You can pick up the phone, you can probably call their staff down there and find out what they're doing. It's a big deal. I mean, they've got a $350 million budget. Their, their rate structure impacts things throughout this community. They probably have the biggest impact on our greenhouse gas footprint of any agency. So, like I said, nothing personal, but I would recommend that the board deny Mr. Spinar's application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on these items? Okay. Seeing none? Theresa?
All right, we can vote on these items. Items 1A through G were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Christensen, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussions? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Items 1H and 2A through B were introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by McGinnis, seconded by Schob. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 4A and B together. They are the application of the Kindler Hotel for a Class CK liquor license at 216 North 11th Street and the related manager application of Russell Bellfield. Right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. State your name and address, please.
My name is Russell Lee Bellfield, 1222 P Street, apartment 2C, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for joining us today, and it's exciting, as I drive by the Kindler Hotel, to see it develop and grow and turn into something that looks magnificent. So tell us a little bit about your application. I know there's a couple of changes that we have to consider as well.
Indeed. The application before you, as I understand it, having never seen a copy of the final application, but working with the city, I understand that we are applying for an app, liquor license to cover the seven-story building itself. There's still construction going on in the Lincoln Commercial Club, the second, third, and fourth floors, which would apply to ultimately the liquor license overall, as well as the streetscape. So given the experiences that we've had in the construction phase and development phase, we think it prudent to limit this application to the seven stories.
And so tell us a little bit about your management experience. Are you going to be the manager of the entire hotel, or?
I've been in the hospitality business for a long time, 35 years, 40 years. I've lived in the, or been in the hotel business and lived coast to coast, Seattle to Tampa, Los Angeles to Long Island, Chicago, Dallas, Houston, Tucson, all in the hotel business, coming up to the food and beverage side, meaning food and beverage director, so directly responsible for bars and restaurants and banquet facilities, and then eventually becoming a general manager. I've worked with Doubletree Hotels and Resorts when, you know, they were owned by Pete Bidstrip. I worked for Wyndham Hotels and Resorts when Trammell Crow owned them. I worked for the Carlson family with Radisson Hotels and Resorts, Radisson Worldwide, and most recently spent 17 years in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, being responsible for the creation and operation of the only teaching hotel on a two-year campus, I think in the Western Hemisphere. I'm pretty sure that North America is, is an accurate statement. So this project brought me out of early retirement. The community colleges in Iowa in 2017 decided to enhance their early retirement packages, so greed got the better of me. We had.
Wisdom.
Well, we had, thank you. We'd accomplished a great deal in that project, so it was time for a new project, and I- We'd accomplished a great deal in that project, so it was time for a new project, and I can tell you that, that the Kindler Hotel, once it is open, will be something that everyone in Lincoln can be proud of, and I'm happy and honored to be a part of it myself, and happy and honored to be a part of the community of Lincoln, and, you know, I live downtown, I'm a block and a half from the hotel, and enjoying myself thoroughly. One of these days, my wife will come join me, and we'll enjoy downtown Lincoln wonderfully. But it's going to be truly, and I've been lucky to work for some really nice hotels across the country, and this will be, the finishes in this hotel are superior and unlike anything I've ever worked with, unlike anything, I am confident, anything in Nebraska. I think, I think the closest market you could go to to find something comparable will be Chicago. It's spectacular, and of course, I invite all the council members to come see it when you get a chance, it's, let us clean it up a little bit, but we're going to get there sooner rather than later.
Terrific. Benny?
I do, thank you. Springboarding from that cleaning it up. There are a few cleanup items that we were, we're going to be looking at today.
Yes, sir.
I think you had a conversation with some of our staff, and you have a full understanding of what we need from you to be on track to get this open by August 22nd?
I think so. August 22nd, yes, sir. I think I do.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm curious, because you're going to receive three different licenses or at different times.
At different times.
Can you explain, how will this license be operationalized? Will you be serving liquor, delivering it to the rooms for room service? Is that how it works?
Yes, conceivably, yes.
Okay. And you have a bar on the first floor?
Boitano's Lounge, yes. So...
Yeah, I've heard about the, who the person who's designing all your drinks.
Brian Boitano.
Yeah.
He's a real nice fellow, and turns out he's, I thought he was a pretty good ice skater, actually, but it turns, turns out he's also a pretty good culinary artist as well. So, the, what we are applying for in this, you could call it a stage, I suppose, is the footprint and the seven floors above the footprint of 216 North 11th Street, and the, we will not be serving alcohol outside those bounds.
And...
And not within the commercial club?
And not within the commercial club, correct. Yes, ma'am.
And that is what the application is before us, Jeff? I know, was, did it have a chance to get cleaned up?
Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney. So, the, the resolution that before you is basically the same as it's always been. We did take out the reference to the Sidewalk Cafe. What has been changed is the application that went to the liquor commission, because that originally had the larger footprint, including the Sidewalk Cafe and including the commerce, the Commerce Club. So, if that would have been what went to the liquor commission and they approved it, they would have been unable to actually serve alcohol until the entire footprint was under their control, and that would have meant they would have had to wait to serve alcohol until the Sidewalk Cafe permit was approved, and because of some complications there, that was somewhat delayed. And so, they felt, and the city that was working with them felt that the best way to, to proceed was to approve the, the original footprint, and then we'll go on to Phase Two. And I would like to say, Tanya is not here today, but she did a lot of work on making sure that this was ready to go forward today, and that's just an example of the kind of work that you don't necessarily see here in the council chambers, but that she does on a week on end and week on basis to partner really with a lot of the businesses in Lincoln to make sure they understand what the law is, they follow the law, but also we work with them as closely as we can, and that's what happened in this case.
May I add something to that? I've, I've worked literally across the country. I don't know how many liquor license applications I've been a part of, and this is really rare for, you know, to us to, to receive this sort of expertise, this help, that not just Tanya, but particularly Tanya provided. We are grateful. I'm personally grateful.
Terrific, well, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Is there any...
Just so we're clear, the resolution before you does not need to be amended.
Okay.
It is correct, and that will allow them to open with the original footprint and then come back before you with a enhanced footprint later on.
Terrific, thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing no one, well, thank you so much for coming and giving us an update.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Russell.
All right, next item.
Next is item 4C, application of Buffalo Wild Wings for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring 132 feet by 75 feet in the west parking lot at 8701 Andermatt Drive on August 22nd from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Katrin Zimmerman, K-A-T-R-I-N, and then last name Z-I-M-M-E-R-M-A-N. Address is 4621 Happy Hollow Court, and I am the regional manager.
And my name is Ron Johnson, that's R-O-N-J-O-H-N-S-O-N, and I am the general manager of the facility at 8701 Andermatt, which is the Buffalo Wild Wings.
Welcome. Thank you both for coming. Tell us a little bit about this event.
Okay.
You want to start?
Go ahead.
No. Sorry.
Well, our plans are to put on a fundraiser event with a couple of the motorcycle clubs here in Lincoln and do an outdoor, kind of a beer garden bike show, in which we're going to donate 30% of those proceeds to the bike club, which they will in turn distribute how they feel they need to be distributed. And in the past, I know they have paid electrical bills for people, they have helped single mothers with vehicles, maybe possibly making payments. I know they have purchased wheelchairs for kids that needed wheelchairs and numerous other things.
And so, and you also have a rain day, is, I'm guessing, is it at a rain date of August 29th? It says alternative date.
Yes, just in case, because it is an outdoor event, we don't plan on having a tent, and so just in case there was a delay, we wanted a backup date.
Wonderful. Does anyone have any questions? Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to testify on this item? Okay, well, thank you both very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Have a good day. You too.
Madam Chair, I move approval of items 4A, B, and C.
Second. Moved by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is assessing the costs incurred by the city for building demolition on property located at 828 West Burnham, and assessment of fees and penalties for neglected buildings on properties generally located at 5703 Huntington Avenue, 3401 North 51st Street, 1850 Harwood Street, 3520 S Street, 3340 C Street, 1611 Harrison Avenue, 1505 E Street, and 6708 Y Street. I will note for the record, we do have a motion to amend to remove 1505 E Street from assessment as they have paid their fines. But if anybody wishes to come forward?
I'm Sean Stewart, Chief Housing Inspector with Building and Safety.
Thank you for coming down. Can you tell us a little bit about, I guess, the, the residence that was demolished and the other buildings that have made it to the neglected building registry?
The property at 828 West Burnham was damaged by the result of a fire, created a dangerous building situation, had a, a dispute over ownership for, for a little bit of time before we eventually stepped in, and the city decided that we were going to demolish that and then allow the parties to work out the civil dispute on the ownership of the property.
So, in this case, is the process, does owner, is the owner given every opportunity to do the demolition themselves, or how does that work?
Yes, we send out multiple notices establishing deadlines for when things need to happen as far as obtaining permits and completing demolition. Those are given to both parties and to their, to legal representation as well for both parties.
And then all the other neglected buildings, how, how do they actually get on the registry?
It generally starts with a complaint process where we, our inspectors go out, note any housing code violations, send notices, and generally, it moves on through the process. Sometimes it goes to prosecution. The code states that once they've had more than two notices on the property, that it can be moved to the neglected building registry, as long as it's a vacant property, of course, because it's vacant, neglected buildings. And so, at that point, we can, we can place it on the neglected building registry, send notice to the responsible parties, and go from there throughout the process.
So, if they fail to take action on some of the items that were noted and validated to be deficiencies, how, I see that for most of them, they, or all of them, they have a total assessment of $1,000.
Correct. The registration is every 90 days. It's a $500 registration fee. If they fail to register it themselves, then the city registers it for them, and then there's a $500 penalty assessed as well, and then, and thus, now we're here at the lien process.
And if they fail to take any action going forward, what's, what's the next step there?
Eventually, the city can foreclose or, or start foreclosure action on the property. We also, I, I go, I use a multifaceted approach as well, as well as being on the neglected building registry, we also exercise our ability to prosecute owners that, you know, when we can get in contact with them and stuff. Some, some, some of these owners are difficult to find.
So, you're on the registry, and then what happens after another 90 days go by? Are they assessed another fine, or?
Yes, every 90 days, it's registered, so...
So, every 90 days, they could get another $500 or maybe up to...
Correct.
A thousand, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions? Well, thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this item? Okay. Thank you.
Next is 5B, approving the consent to assignment agreement between the city and SMG ONEX to provide that ASM Global will, through merger, assume AEG Facility LLC's contractual relationship with the city in 2019 to operate and manage Pinnacle Bank Arena.
Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney. SMG is the company that has run Pinnacle Bank Arena since it opened. In fact, it was the company that ran the Persian Auditorium for the city prior to the Pinnacle Bank Arena being constructed and opening. This is actually the second time we've been in front of you because of a contract clause we have with SMG, which says that they are, the ownership is purchased by another company, that the city has the opportunity to approve that, or we could essentially terminate the agreement we have with SMG. We did that a couple of years ago, and now the company that bought SMG at that time is merging with another company, and because of that contract provision, we're in front of you again today, asking you to approve this merger with the new ownership arrangement for SMG. It will not, our assurance has been, it will not change the way SMG is operating Pinnacle Bank Arena. Tom Lorenz will remain as the manager of the arena, and will go for it as it has been in the past, so that's why I guess we're asking you to approve this resolution, allowing the merger to go forward and leave SMG in place as a manager. That, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Teresa, can we vote on these items?
We sure can. Item 5A, assessing the costs incurred for building demolition and assessment of fees and penalties for neglected buildings, was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by McGinnis.
Amended by Washington.
Okay.
I'll second the amendment.
And let's have a discussion on the amendment. What does it do?
The amendment removes 1505 E Street from the list of addresses they have paid their fine.
Okay, great. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Let's please vote on the amendment.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, now on the main motion, is there any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on the main motion.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 5B, the consent to assignment agreement with SMG, was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing ordinances, second reading. I'll call items 6A through I together. They are all amending pay schedules for employee groups. One is the pay range is prefixed by the letter B, the letter N, A, C, M, F, X, E, and W, all to be effective August 22nd, 2019.
Good afternoon, City Council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. All of these ordinances relate to the pay plans for the specific groups identified by their letters. Charter holds that City Council must approve each ordinance and for the pay plan, and they're done on an annualized basis. Even though the vast majority of these are represented, you've, the City Council's already approved the standing labor contract. They're a two-year contract, this is now the second year. The exception to that are those groups that are unrepresented, which are 6G, H, and I. Those are unrepresented groups. Pay Plan X, Pay Plan E, and Pay Plan W, again, so these are all the annual increases, they're all contained within the budget.
Any questions of Mr. McDaniel? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this item? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public hearing portion. Our resolutions on first reading are items 7A through H, or ordinances on first reading are items 8A through C.
I move adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Christensen, seconded by McGinnis. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.